Well, and welcome. I call to order this meeting of the Arlington Select Board on Monday, May 16th, 2022. I am the Select Board Chair Leonard Diggins, and I will now confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in an affirmative. Diane Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
John Heard?
Yes.
Steve DeCoursey?
Yes.
Eric Helmes?
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in affirmative. Adam Chapton Lane?
Yes.
Doug Heim?
Yes.
And Board Administrator Ashley Meyer is participating but not as panelists. Tonight's meeting of the Arlington Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with an act signed into law on February 15th, 2022, that extends certain COVID-19 measures. The act includes an extension until July 15th, 2022, of the remote meeting provisions of Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 executive orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The governor's order, which is on the town's website and referenced with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely as long as there is reasonable public access that allows the public to follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Before we begin, please note the following. First, this meeting is being conducted via Zoom. It is being recorded and is also being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI. Second, persons wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. Persons, excuse me, persons participated by Zoom are reminded that you may be visible to others and that if you wish to participate, you are asked to provide your full name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. Third, all participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. Both Zoom participants and persons watching or APACMI can follow the posted materials also found on the town's website using the platform. And finally, each vote tonight will be taken by roll call. We have a lot on deck for this 75-minute meeting, but before we do so, let's take a moment to acknowledge the passing of Lieutenant Danny Kelly III, a lifelong dedicated member of the Arlington Police Department for over 30 years. As we think of Lieutenant Kelly, let us also acknowledge the awful events of this past weekend in our country. Let us try to temper our own potentially negative responses to these actors of hatred and violence so that we can act constructively in this chemistry that love really is stronger than hate, that we have much in common with each other, and that our differences and our diversity are sources of strength and resilience. I now turn to the second item on the agenda. Ah, and I lost that one. Hold on a second, please. Sorry. All right. So the second item is the request for a temporary parking exemption for Arlington High Senior Prom buses. And so we have a Mr. Steve Angelo listed. He may not be here because when I was putting the agenda together, I also notified Officer Ruto about the need to be here, and he said that we had essentially approved a very similar request fee for the junior prom in, and that he really didn't feel that it was necessary for him to be here to approve it. It would not only save some time, but also save the town some money. So I was fine with that. So it is approval item. I will, you know what, I'm just gonna ask for
Approval?
to raise your hands or something. Just, Mr. Helmes?
I second Mr. Heard's motion.
Okay, great. So any comments, questions for anyone? Okay, great. So on a motion approved by Mr. Heard and a second by Mr. Helmes, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Helmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Turn on his vote.
Thank you. And so now we're on to the consent agenda. On that, we have minutes of the May 2nd, 2022 meeting, and requests for, a request for the annual Greek Festival on June 10th, 11th, and 12th. And that includes a three-day special one-day beer and license, beer and wine license, and a one-way designation of Appleton Place from Mass Ave to Burton Street. And next being for approval, Beer Garden at Jason Russell House on Saturdays from June through September 2022 by Brian Burke, the owner and president of Burke's Brewing Company. And so I'm not anticipating that anyone will be here, you know, since they're on the consent agenda. So once again, I'll just take
Can I, Mr. Chair, move approval? And I do see Mr. Burke is here.
Okay, great. Thank you. You know, so we can bring Mr. Burke on if he wants to say anything. You know, Mr. Chapton Lane?
All right. Just invited him to join the meeting if he chooses to. Here he comes.
Mr. Chair, while we wait, I'd happy to second Mrs. Mahan's motion.
Thank you.
So streamlined tonight.
You know, I could see you all just fine, you know. Mr. Burke?
Good evening, everybody.
Thanks for being here. You know, anything you want to tell us about the Beer Garden this year?
Yeah, I just, you know, I prefaced it in the cover letter, my application, you know, we did this trial Beer Garden in September of last year. We did four Saturday afternoons. We were blessed with four perfect 70-degree days, and we had a wonderful turnout. We had a lot of folks from the neighborhood walk down. We had a lot of bicyclists come off the Minuteman Trail. Overall, we just had a really nice event. We had really great feedback from everybody, and we're really thankful that the Arlington Historical Society asked us to come back and do an extended run. So.
Great. Yes, people have been asking me about it already. So any other comments, questions from my colleagues? Okay, I think we're all set. So I hope, I think this was gonna go well. So I'm gonna wish you a really great summer. You know, so with that, on a motion of approval, 40% agenda by Ms. Mahan and a second by Mr. Helmes, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Heard? Mr. Corsey?
Yes.
Mr. Helmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Turn on his vote.
Great. Thanks. Yeah. So moving on to item number six, the licenses and permits, we have for approval, Sashwan's Dumpling, 1360 Mass Ave with Leon Chen. This is a common victual, victual license, and a wine and malt license, and is
It's Chen.
Thanks. Hello?
Mr. Chairman, someone named Russell Chen is also raising their hand. I'm gonna promote them as part of the application package.
I was, I was holding back on, on the title on this one because I really wasn't sure the pronouns. I gotta tell you, I mean, I'm getting more and more, it's just kind of like, let me make sure I know the pronouns, and let me make sure I know how you want to be addressed before I start saying anything to anyone, you know? So are we still waiting? Yeah. Okay, that's fine. Let's see here.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
So I, so is this Ms. or Mrs. Chen?
Yes.
Okay, which one do you prefer? It's good. You know, so anything you want to tell us about your Sashwan's Dumpling that we don't know already? Like, it's a really good place to eat, great dumplings, great atmosphere?
Yeah, we made really good dumpling. What can everybody come?
Okay, you know, so, well, Mimi, Mimi's a wonderful person. She kind of alerted me to the fact, you know, about three years ago that this is gonna happen. And so I'm glad to see that instead of Sashwan Dumpling closing down, it's transferring license, you know. So, yeah, my colleagues, have any questions, comments, motions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Helmes?
I'd like to know if the soup dumplings will remain on the menu? If she can hear me.
Someone didn't read the menu.
You know what, that's on me. I will find out. And I
Yeah, all right.
It's one of their favorite dish, and I'm delighted, as you are, that the restaurant is continuing. So thank you.
And now that you're talking, anything else you want to say?
I'm good.
Okay.
Just move approval.
Thank you. Thank, that's what's getting at. So, thank you, Mr. Heard. Any questions, comments, anyone? All right, great. So, yes, so a motion to approve by Mr. Helmes and a second by Mr. Heard, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Helmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Turn on his vote.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. So next on the agenda is approval for outdoor restaurant and retail permit application, the Heights Pub. I don't have a name associated with this one.
I see Mr. O'Rourke is here, so I will promote him if that's okay with the chair?
Sure, thank you.
Tell this work?
I see the microphone is still in mute mode.
Okay, how about now?
Yes, you can hear you now, Mr. O'Rourke. Thanks for joining us. You know, so anything you want to tell us about your application for an outdoor permit?
No, I'm just looking to offer outdoor dining for the guests, and it's very popular at my other restaurant, First House Club in Winchester. So I'd like to bring that to Arlington Heights.
Well, thank you very much. So any questions, comments, motions from my colleagues? So Mrs. Mahan, approval, and Mr. DeCoursey, I saw your hand?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question for Mr. O'Rourke. I see in his application, the plan has five tables listed. The memo from Ms. Carter identifies five tables, but in the permit application, it says six tables. And so I just want to clarify what we're approving or what he's requesting from us. And also, if he could comment on the timing of, I think he wants to put in a, some flooring to, or some temporary structure to bring the tables up to the level of the sidewalk. And Ms. Carter had suggested that maybe we approve the outdoor seating first and then approve the, the structure later because there might be more approvals. But if he could answer those two questions, that would just be helpful on the scope of the application.
Great. Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke.
Yeah, so one of the tables at the end could either be a four-top, six-top. It's two tables together. So that's, that might be where the confusion is on that. And as for the flooring, we're gonna hold off. It's a pretty level area in front of the, the restaurant.
Okay, and so
Mr. Chairman, I have a follow-up to that. Just to clarify, it's, I saw the five, the five and the six, but I also saw in the application or request for seating for 24, but then in the application from the applicant, it's six tops. It's requesting 28 seats for outside. So are we 28 or 24?
Mr. O'Rourke?
Uh, I have two tables of six and three tables of four, so I think that's 24.
Okay, no, that's fine. Your application has, where you kind of did the blueprints of, of the outside, it has four tops, six tables, 28. So we're, we're 24. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Any other questions, comments? Okay, I'm not seeing. So, so backing up to Mr. What, Mrs. Corsey reference, hold on a second. Did I get a second to this? I know that Mrs. Mahan, a motion. Have I gotten a second? I know that I went to Mr. for a question. So can, I get, okay, Mr. Heard, thank you. So, so Mr. Corsey? Or maybe this is too behind. So do we need to amend the motion on this? Because be, your motion is behind, may imply, maybe imply that we were gonna do everything. And the conversation makes me think that we aren't doing the flooring, and we're just gonna do the tables. And so do you feel this behind that we need to amend the motion, or?
No, I'm, I'm fine with that. It's, if he had said that it was gonna be 28 seating, which is different than the actual three-page application, then I would have wanted to further clarify that. But he said he's committed to what he put in, in the application from the town, which is 24. So thank you.
Great. And so I think we're all set here. And so a motion for approval from this behind and a second for Mr. Heard, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Corsey?
Yes.
Mr. Helmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Turn on his vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Whoa. Item number eight for approval, another victual license, and, okay, I'm gonna give this a try. McCott E. U. Restaurant, and we have Rochan Dangle and Amit Bastin.
Rochan Dangle is here. It's town manager, getting care of that.
So, okay, we just have one?
Yeah. Hi.
Hi. And this is Mr. Dangle?
No, this is Dipendra Kharki. I'm the manager. Dangle is also here. If you want to talk to him, or I can talk to you.
I'm fine with the manager. If the owner does want to say something, that's fine. So so first off, how do you pronounce the name of the restaurant?
Makalu, M-A-K-A-L-U, like the mountain Makalu.
Oh, you know, I was seeing as an I. I wasn't seeing as an L. Okay.
M-A-K-A-L-U.
Okay, gotcha. Now I had an I there. You know, maybe it's just my bad vision. Okay. It makes it easier to pronounce, you know. So, so great, you know. So, well, we really appreciate you wanting to do this in Arlington. But let me open it up to my colleagues first, for question, comments, possible motion?
Sure.
Move approval?
Thank you, Mr. Heard. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. DeCoursey. Any questions, comments? My colleagues? So, well, I'm excited about this. Nepalese, we used to have another Nepalese place.
Yeah. Gattanu Spice.
Yes, yes, exactly. You know, really good food, you know. And so I missed it when they, when they left. So it's a, it's a good spot for me. I'm in East Arlington, and I walk around that area a lot. So, so I'm looking forward to it, you know. So, so best luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome. So, so on a motion to approve by Mr. Heard and a second by Mr. Corsey, Mr. Heim?
Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Corsey?
Yes.
Mr. Helmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
My apologies, Miss Mahan. Thank you so much. Turn on his vote.
Bye-bye. Thank you.
Thank you.
So
Appreciate.
Welcome. And so, okay, so now we're at items nine and 10. And I had initially put water rates at the bottom, just in case we were, we running low on time. I wanted to make sure that we had plenty of time to discuss the town manager, the interim town manager item. But if my colleagues don't mind, and if Mr. Radamacher is here, I mean, I'm happy to take that now. And then Mr. Radamacher can leave if he'd like, and then we can spend the rest of the time that we have discussing town manager. So how do we feel about this, Mr. Manager? Is it Mr. Rock? Oh, here he comes in. Great. You know, so thank you, Mr. Radamacher. And, and so, Mr. Manager, I imagine you're gonna want to lead off the discussion on this?
Yes, I will. I'll give a very brief introductory remarks, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. So I think as the board is now well aware, this will be the third year that we are rolling off the MWRA debt shift, which is the program or the statutory allowance that the town has used for many, many years now to carry a portion of water sewer debt on the tax rate. Again, I'm saying this more for the public than for the board. The board made a decision several years ago in light of debt rolling onto the tax rate from the high school and the Minuteman Project and the Gibbs Construction to begin to roll off that water sewer-related debt so that we could have some tax rate stabilization or mitigation with the understanding that water rates would need to be increased in a corresponding amount in order to collect the revenue attributable to the amount that had been paid for by that water sewer debt shift. So the prior two fiscal years, we did two tranche, tranches of that debt shift reduction. This is the third and final year. The reason we did it in three years is so that we were both not creating a giant ebb and flow in the tax rate, and also to avoid a water sewer rate shock. So we tried to do it in three years. This is the third and final year. So you'll see that the percentages are larger than what we would normally ask for, for a water sewer rate increase. But that is the basis for what we're asking the board to vote on tonight. I think what I would ask Mr. Radamacher to do is talk a little bit more in depth about the water sewer system itself, and what is driving the costs not associated with the MWRA debt shift, to describe that portion of the rate increase.
Thank you, Mr. Radamacher.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Sure. I mean, the, the, the major drivers of our, of our rates are the MWRA assessments. It's about 15 million of our 20-plus million dollar budget, in addition to capital costs and salaries and wages and typical operating expenses. But the, aside from removing the debt shift, it's a fairly standard increase with the budget from year to year.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Radamacher. You know, so, so I'm, you know, on this one, you know, I'm just, I'm gonna go down the line just to give everyone a chance to, to speak to it if they want. You don't have to, you know. So I am going to start with Mr. Heard.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval. I think we've, in the past few years, talked ad nauseam about the debt shift. So we've all, we're all on record on, in supporting what we've done here. And I think it's been successful in helping to alleviate some of the tax burdens that we're seeing on the tax bills. And I think people appreciate that. So happy to support this.
Thank you, Mr. Heard. And so next, Mr. Corsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll second Mr. Heard's motion. And also, just when I want to thank Mr. Radamacher. I had a couple of questions for him and the town manager earlier today, and he got right back to me. And just, again, at the risk of talking about this a little bit further, but we, the recommendation is 11.31% rate increase on water and 11.14% on sewer. If the debt shift wasn't included, Mr. Radamacher tells me that the increase would have averaged 4.2%. So the bulk of this increase is because of this, these costs coming off the real estate tax bills and coming over to rates, and really where they belong to be paid by the ratepayers. But I think that distinction is, is important because that amount is being paid whether it's on the, on the tax bills or whether it's in rates. So rates in total, or the request is to increase them just a little over 4%.
Thank you for that elucidation, Mr. DeCoursey. And Mr. Helmes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Mr. DeCoursey, for that. I think, I agree, it's really important to have clarity on what the constituents of that rate increase. And I have a question through you, Mr. Chair, to perhaps the manager, is to how the town will, what the town's plans are for explaining and communicating that to the residents so that, you know, they fully understand what's going on.
Through you to Mr. Helmes. So I might sort of try to answer a little bit and then defer to Mr. Radamacher. But I know we have put language together describing this that we've had on the town website, and that we've reshared each year as we have asked the board to make this move. Mr. Radamacher, do you recall, have we put it on sort of a buck slip in the water bills, in the next water bill as well, or have we just used electronic communication?
We have in the past used information in the water bill. We, the next water bill, I'm trying to remember if the next water bill will actually have these increases. It is on our website. It's been on the website for three years, each year of the shift. And we do typically put a notice on the bill, if not some kind of notice with it. Explain, explain the reasons. Yeah, thank you very much. This is, this is a suggestion, given that this is like the fir, the third and final year that we're doing this. You know, I might suggest, at least to consider that if it's practical, a buck slip might not be a bad idea, just to say, okay, this is it, you know, we're, we're done. And I think it really is valuable to point out that the actual infrastructure cost is 4%, you know, rated, that that's what this is. And the rest of this is what you are already paying, but somewhere else. You know, just, I'm thinking particularly since we are heading into, you know, very, very possibly an override campaign next year, that might be a proactive piece of communication we could do, just so people understand what we're doing, and they don't feel like this is another cost that's ballooning. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Yeah, happy to support this.
Thank you, Mr. Helmes. Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This question may be apples and oranges, so I apologize. I know, I believe last year, we were setting the rates that the MWRA had lower assessments in light of the fact of COVID and, and financial struggles. And if I say anything that's incorrect, please, guessing through the chair to Mr. Radamacher. And I know last year, we have it at 9:20 and 10:78, and this year we have it at 11:30, 11.31 and 11.14. So my question is, sort of two-part, is the MWRA was last year a one-time thing where they lowered their assessment to Arlington in light of COVID and financial struggles? And if the, or is that reflected again this year? If the answer is yes, it was only last year, is part of the reason, because I know we started out back in '21, like eight or nine dollars, or nine and $10 respectively. So I'm just wondering, this number this year, is it MWRA making it up for last year when they did give us some relief? Or is it a natural progression?
Yes. So there was a one, there was a one-time relief by the MWRA. Typically, their increases to us are in the 3% or 4% range on the assessments, and they, they limited it to 1% last year to help communities struggling with the finances of COVID. But that was, like I said, a one-time thing, and they're back now to a typical 3% increase.
So it's not a plain catch-up for the 1% last year. It's they're back to their normal custom and practice course of business of 3% to 4%. It sounds like we're close to the 3%?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. You know, so I'm debating whether I'm gonna ask the question or not. I'm not, you know. So I'm just gonna say that I'm happy to see the, once again, that's last year. I liked, I liked seeing the gradation of increases in the rates based on the amount of water usage. But actually, I am gonna ask questions. It's a different question, optimal. So as the rates increase, are those increases determined by us? Or, or is there a formula that comes from some other source that determines how much it goes up? I mean, like, once you cross the 16 cubic foot, or is it 100 cubic feet threshold?
So the, if, if, if I may, the tier structure was developed through help with the consultant So the, the, um, if, 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 if I may, uh, the, the tier structure was developed through, helped with the consultant about. Five to seven years ago, the, the three different tiers, the zero to fifteen CCF, the fifteen to thirty, and the. Thirty to, um, forty-five, although, um, we, we changed, yeah, right, those, those different tiers. Were, were helped through a consultant to mimic, um, other communities as well as efforts for water conservation. Uh, the actual setting of the rates for each of those tiers is done by my office. Uh, based on projected, uh, expenses, and the revenues will need to, um, cover those expenses.
Gotcha, thank you, because I mean, the, the, the only people that have said anything to me. Complaining about the, the rates, eh, are those who feel that, well, in the summertime when they wanna water their lawn, I mean. They're gonna get charged more, and, and, I mean, I have my feelings about that, eh, but this helps me understand at least. How the differences are, are derived, so that's it, you know, so, um. I don't see any other questions, I mean, so on a motion to approve by Mr. Heard. And a second by Mr. Corsi, Mr. Heim.
Mr. Heard.
Yes.
Mr. Corsi.
Yeah.
Mr. Helmut.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Um, I'll definitely, yes, I should have asked this before, is this a public hearing where we're setting the water rate or no?
Um, I don't have it on the agenda as a hearing.
Okay.
But if in the past it has been, I mean, uh, maybe we could certainly back out and see if there are any questions, you know, from. Um, people in, um, in the participants list, I mean, so is that people's rep, like, recollection that these have been hearings? Um, Mr. Mr. Chatelain.
I don't have that particular recollection, but I would defer to Ms. Mahan, who's longer institutional.
I think that's for the tax rate in December. I don't recall for the water bill.
Okay, that's fine, and, and, and I don't see any good answer rates anyway, so thank you, Mr. Chair, yes.
No problem, so thanks for, for looking out for that, appreciate it, you know, so, um, all right, and.
Mr. Diggs.
Thank you, yes, you know. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Radamacher.
Thank you very much, everybody.
You can hang around if you want, but free to go too. You know, so, so, um, so now, uh, we go to, um, discussion about. Uh, the next phase in, in our search for, uh, town manager or. Or how we deal, uh, with things when, uh, current town manager departs, I mean, so, um. At this point, eh, I've been working with Mr. Corsi, eh, you all have seen the memo, eh, from, from Mr. Heim. You know, eh, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Corsi, eh, uh, cause I think he'll provide all the introduction. I provide, meaning in discussing, eh, his feelings about how we should move forward, and if I need to add anything, I will. And so with that, Mr. Corsi.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, um, want to thank Attorney Heim as well for the, the memorandum that he, he provided to us. At, at the end of last week, and so, um. Section twelve B of the Town Manager Act controls the appointment of a successor to, to Mr. Chatelain upon. Uh, he's leaving Arlington on, on June seventeenth, and we have gone through a process where we've, uh, sought interest from. From individuals for the interim town manager position, and, um. In, in looking at section twelve B, um, talking to the chair and talking to Attorney Heim. Uh, the feeling was that, um, Mr. Poole has been identified as, as an individual to, to serve. Beginning on June eighteenth, um, su- subject to, to negotiations, uh, with him, and that period very well may. Go past September fifteenth, which would be ninety days from June seventeenth, and the Town Manager Act talks about. An appointment for the balance of the unexpired term. And here, where there is so much term remaining in Mr. Chatelain's contract, there are some issues that I think we need to. Discuss with, with Mr. Poole, and, and I'm sure he would like to discuss with us. Um, because i- if, if we were to appoint him for the balance of the unexpired term, that would go to two thousand twenty-five. He does not, um, plan on staying in Arlington through two thousand twenty-five. Um, however, th- there, there is a period of time that he would like to, to remain here, and we want to respect that and, and try to work with him. On that and, um, have an opportunity to talk to him about that, and, and I think. It's one of those things as, as we look through section twelve B, given the timing that we, we face ourselves. The, the Town Manager Acts, eh, has some limitations in terms of what we can do in terms of timing, and, and I think. As we go forward, we may want to think about a change to it for, for, for subsequent appointments. Um, but I think in the short term, it makes sense, we had a draft motion from Attorney Heim. I think it makes sense, um, and I'm gonna propose this as a motion, um, a motion to authorize the chair. To enter negotiations with Sandy Poole to serve as town manager pursuant to section twelve B of the Town Manager Act, and I think. Those discussions and negotiations probably can, if, if, if there is approval this evening, start right away, and we can come back as a board. And, um, and, and, um, have a subsequent vote, but, but have a better conversation with Mr. Poole about. Uh, his concerns and his timing, and I, I want to thank him, uh, for being candid, um, in terms of. What his intentions are, I think that's really gonna help the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Corsi, and so we have a motion, you know, so.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Heard, um, any questions, comments? Colleagues?
Um, just a question after Mr. Helmut, I'm sorry.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, no, I, I really appreciate your, your, Mr. De Corsi's work on this. Uh, I'm happy to support the motion, I think it's, it's, it's a logical next step. Um, and I look forward to seeing, uh, you know, to, to learning more about, um, about tiny, um, suggestions that Mr. Poole has and that we have, and, you know. See, we'll see what, uh, the best course of action could be. Uh, I think needless to say, I would, you know, would suggest that we take this up as soon as possible. You know, our next meeting, and, and, um, I'm sure that we'll make all due haste to do this, given, given, uh, the timeline.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut, Mr. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um. What I'm hearing is either the next meeting or the meeting after, uh, the board will discuss this, I assume it's not covered by executive session. Um. Just, uh, for your benefit, Mr. Chair, and, and Mr. De Corsi, who are, are designated on this, um. My two top of my head questions would be, one that Mr. De Corsi's already touched on, um. With the process starting, if we don't get it done in just about a year, um. In, um, being mindful and respectful of Mr. Poole's, um, time here in Arlington. Um, I agree, we need to have a, a plan B or whatever kind of plan you wanna call, talk. Call it afterwards, um. And I.
You're breaking.
I'm hearing from Mr. De Corsi is we should probably rather do that, um, sooner than. Even when the circum. I'm unstable.
Yeah, you're, you're, so I think we, we've probably missed like the last three or four sentences, I mean, so, so.
How's that in my back?
It, it seemed to be back, I mean, so maybe, eh, back up about, I mean. Four or five sentences, you might repeat some things, but that'll be okay. Uh, no, still unstable.
I'll skip.
All right, but, but I think we have, I think we have the gist of what, of what you're getting at, eh, for sure, although I did have a question, um, regarding the. Uh, your, your statement about executive session, but, but, um. Maybe I'll come back to you, maybe you won't be unstable, or if not, then maybe Mr. Heim can help out. I see Mr. Heim's hand up now, and then I saw Mr. Helmut wanting to talk, so I'll come back to you, Mr. Helmut, right after, Mr. Heim, so.
Just wanted to, uh, if Mrs. Mark could note for the record that the, uh, Ms. Mahan's signal was lost, just to make sure that the record is clear for. Uh, Mrs. Mahan was trying to make a point at, I think, seven twenty-two PM, so. It looks like the signal stabilized, but it's just important note for the record. Secondly, um, just in advance of any questions about this. To the extent that the board is engaging in strategy sessions for the purposes of conducting a contract negotiation with non-union personnel. You may go into executive session for that specific purpose. Um, can't go into executive sessions generally, which may be what Miss Mahan is saying, but if you are gonna move forward and you wanna have a. Strategy session for negotiation, you may go into executive session, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Heim, so that answers my question, thank you, thanks for raising that, Mrs. Mahan, um, Mr. Helmut.
Thank you, M- Mr. Chair, and just a follow-up for, uh, for, for Mr. Heim. Uh, Mr. Heim, do you feel like the, the motion that has been presented by Mr. De Corsi would qualify for executive session under the conditions that you just outlined?
As long, thank you, Mr. Helmut, Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes.
As long as the board is going into executive session to conduct a strategy session, it doesn't necessarily matter what Mr. De Corsi's specific motion is. Right now, it's that when the agenda is posted, um, the purpose for that executive session has to be discreet and limited to, uh. Strategy sessions for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, you know, so, um, so. I don't wanna put you on the spot, Mr. Heim, I mean, so you can just say, I mean. I'll talk about this some other time, you know, is there anything you would like to say regarding, you know, section twelve being in, any, um. Pop, well, anything that we could do, cause it, it does seem pretty restrictive, I mean, um, and so, uh, is it as restrictive? As it looks, I mean, or, you know, are we as locked in as it looks, or do we have more flexibility than there seems to be there?
So, um, I wanna be, thank you, Mr. Chair, I wanna be candid with the board and the public in the sense that, um, the way that. The Manager Act reads really contemplates two scenarios. The scenario under twelve A is really irrelevant. The Manager Act really contemplates this fealty to this idea of terms. Um, and an appointment pursuant to twelve B is an appointment in the event of a vacancy, uh, which is essential, which is exactly what's happening here. The board can't, um. Neither, not, neither, someone can't be forced to work for the board, and the board, uh, isn't limited entirely in the way that it. Uh, conducts business, and it's not happy with a manager, it doesn't have to keep a manager on board for the purposes of filling section twelve B of the Town Manager. But the Manager Act read in its most literal form, definitely contemplates this idea that. You know, you're gonna have, uh, uh, remainder of a term filled by the, anybody appointed under that section. Now, in the past, um, my understanding is that there have been, under slightly different circumstances, Mr. Chatelain's appointment as town manager. After Mr. Sullivan's retirement, Mr. Sullivan was in the middle of a three-year contract. Mr. Chatelain was not appointed to finish that contract, but what was slightly different about that scenario is that. To my understanding, Mr. Chatelain was hired after a process and. Was anticipated to serve for a full three years when that contract was entered, so. It is a little bit of a, a pickle, uh, in terms of the way the Town Manager Act reads and the way that it contemplates things, it's not. Maybe as flexible or as modern as, um, I would like it to be. Um, but, um, I think the right way forward is to understand that under any contract with any manager. Um, for any period of time, the board always reserves rights with respect to, uh, giving notice for a manager, and typically vice versa. So I, I, I'm not sure if that answers your question, but I, I, I think the, the Manager Act, if you read it in a more. Conservative way, uh, does contemplate the fealty to terms that is not super practical. And, um, the board has typically exercised its latitude in these si- situations. Um, but through the consent and agreement of the people that they're working with. I hope that, I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, it does, I mean, and, and, and also what it, it does is it, it makes what we. Think about doing going forward more transparent, and so I appreciate, I mean, your explanation, I mean, especially in this, in this venue, so. Um, I'm not seeing any indications of more questions or comments, I mean, so on, uh. Motion, eh, to, um, potentially enter into, um, negotiations with Mr. Poole. I mean, um, to, um. Fill our, or to step in, I mean, as town manager, um. And, uh, from this is Corsi, and on a second from Mr. Heard, you know, Mr. Heim.
Mr. De Chris, I'm sorry, Mr. Heard.
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes.
Mr. Helmut.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. Diggs.
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
So, seven thirty, nicely done, folks, you know, so, so I was a little concerned that we, we were. Gonna have a hard time fitting the meeting in, eh, to an hour, I really appreciate you all, eh, eh. Your willingness, me, to start the meeting fifteen minutes early, I think, me, just having a slack makes for a less stressful meeting, and I'm all about stress reduction. At least as much as possible, so I appreciate it. So, we have some time to new business. Anyone has any? I know, we kept it all because we thought we weren't gonna have time for any, you know.
I, I have one thing, but I don't know if I'm still unstable.
No, 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 you're, you're fine, you know.
All right, I'll, I'll make it real brief if I could ask through you, Mr. Chair, or to you and the town manager, um, starting to get a lot of complaints. In East Arlington ever since, uh, Cambridge, East Cambridge basically eliminated, um, parking. Along with the construction projects that are going on in Cambridge and on the Cambridge summer lines. The board has gotten out to lots of contractors with big trucks, which makes it difficult to get out of driveways to park on Boulevard Lafayette. And, um, Fairmont, I don't know how it is across the other way, so. I don't know if that, if, if that's something that can be looked into through the planning department or whatever, to see if there's any kind of solution, but. Um, I've been down there quite a few times, and it's, um, difficult, I can get down, cause I'll drive through anything, but. Um, the, the word is definitely out because of the parking prohibition in, um, East Cambridge on Mass South. Um, cause I spoke to a couple of Parkers, construction workers, um, and I was told that unofficially, so thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and so, um. I'm not seeing any calls for, Mr. Mr. Corsi?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, given, given that we have a little time, I, I have a couple of short ones, and. First thing, I, I would like to wish a happy birthday to Jack Bowler, who is ninety years old today, former town employee. Father of our Arlington High Athletic Director, John Bowler, and the Bowler family has been very active in the community, and I wanna, um. Send, send greetings to, to, to Jack on his birthday. Um, the second thing, Mr. Chairman. Is I had the pleasure last week of attending the Touchdown Awards Banquet, um, for Arlington High School. Athletes, seniors, and, and, and teams, and the Ostrich Award, which is the student. Uh, athlete, um, senior athlete, uh, one male, one female, Reed Malatesta won, and Grace Corsetti won, so congratulations to both of them. And I will just leave the guest speaker was Barbara Stevens, who was the former basketball coach at Bentley University. She is the winningest coach in Division Two history, won over a thousand games, she gave a great talk to the students who were there. About taking chances and learning from failure, and I just wanna cite a quote that she had in the locker room, cause I thought it was really, uh. Really well done about taking chances and not being afraid to fail and being uncomfortable, and, and it. Um, and she said, we had a quote in our locker room, or sign in our locker room that said, there's no growth in the comfort zone. And there's no comfort in the growth zone, and I, I thought that was, uh, really well said to the group there, so, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, you're welcome, and that was inspiring, I certainly take that to heart, so, thank you very much, you know, so. Um, well, and I'm not seeing any other, um, new business, I mean, I certainly.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to suspend and re-adjourn the regular town meeting, and that the adjournment of, final adjournment of our meeting will be concurrent with the. Final adjournment of regular town meeting.
Okay. Second, so, um, Mr. Heim.
Mr. Heard.
Yes.
Mr. Corsi.
Yes.
Mr. Helmut.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. Diggs.
Yes.
unanimous vote, see you guys soon.
You soon, Mr. Chair.
Bye.